What I'd like to do now is maybe give Chief Scott, are you going to be doing the presentation?
Yes, sir.
And don't go away, Lindsey and Mike, you know, we might have other questions later, but maybe the presentation that Chief Scott will do will provide some of the answers that we may have. Go ahead, Chief Scott.
Thank you, President. Yeah, I think we will be able to address some of the questions in the presentation you're about to see.
So, go ahead.
Okay, we're putting it up on the screen. Can you all see?
Not yet. Key's up.
Okay, all right. So, we're gonna spend probably a little bit, based on the questions, maybe a minute or two more on some of the slides, and I think it'll provide some of the answers, particularly to Supervisor Walton's questions and some insight on that. Next slide, please. So, and I'll start with this, you know, the collaborative reform process was started in 2016, and I think everybody knows this, so we'll skip over this part of the background. Mayor Lee, and at the time Chief Sir, and the U.S. Department of Justice agreed to do a top-to-bottom assessment of the San Francisco Police Department, and as Ms. Morgan stated, what got us here was a series of high-profile, often-involved shootings and other things that were happening in the country and policing at the time. They really caused this top-to-bottom assessment. At the end of the assessment, what we ended up with is 94 findings and 272 reform recommendations that were recommended by the U.S. Department of Justice. And Mayor Lee and the Police Department, Chief Sir at the time, and when I got here, I followed suit, agreed to take on and implement every one of the 272. Next slide, please. I want to spend a little bit of time here, based on Supervisor Walton's question, really explaining what this collaborative process is and what it means in terms of how we got to the funding scenario we're in right now. One of the advantages for municipal police departments to engage in collaborative reform, and we were one of 13 departments, I believe, that the USDAOJ had engaged with, was that the USDAOJ provided not only the technical assistance, but a lot of the costs, in terms of the consultant costs and those type of costs, were absorbed by the USDAOJ. So, as Ms. Morgan stated, Hillard Heinz was that contractor that was working with the USDAOJ on the San Francisco Police Department Reform Initiative. Next slide, please. This timeline, it will help a little bit explain how we got to this current financial arrangement. So, as you can see in the timeline, 2016 began. There were investments made by the city, the mayor's office at the time, significant investments, in terms of supporting this work. In April of 2016, the cops office and city and county of San Francisco entered into an MOU that really provided the layout of how we would work together on this initiative. June, body worn cameras were implemented, and I want to go, actually, I'm gonna fast forward, because part of what was talked about earlier with the line of questioning to Mr. Durden was how we stratify the recommendations. As you can see, in December of 2016 is when we updated and revised our use-of-force policy, which was significant, because that foundational work really, I think, laid the foundation for us to have a chance of success, to reduce the number of use-of-forces, and particularly in terms of the often-involved shootings. That force, as you all might recall, banned the carotid hole, it banned shooting at or from moving vehicles, and really emphasized the sanctity of life in our use-of-force policy, and along with many other new revisions that were best practices in terms of use-of-force policies. So, in 2017, I was appointed, and as I said, my commitment from the start has been to implement all 272 and work with our stakeholders, the Police Commission, and others to implement all 272 recommendations. February of 2017, we restructured the Police Department to support this work. Command staff was restructured, CIT training was expanded, and really, our focus was to support and sustain collaborative reform. Fast forward, I'm gonna skip through some of this, but September of 2017, and this is important because this was pivotal. This was when the USDAOJ, after a change in presidential administrations, went in a different direction, and they terminated our MOU, our reform MOU. So, at the time, Mayor Lee was still alive, and discussions with the Commission, Mayor Lee, was that we were committed to continue the work and to figure out a way to find new collaborative partners to continue the work. Part of that decision-making process ended up being in a place where the city and county of San Francisco had to fund the portion that previously the USDAOJ funded, which was the consultant. So, to Supervisor Walton's questions in terms of, you know, the cost of the consultant, when this work was under USDAOJ, we didn't bear any of those costs. You know, we had a substantial investment on other issues, body worn camera and training and other things that we committed to, but in terms of consultant and the collaborative work involved in that, the technical assistance and the like, we didn't absorb any of those costs. When we made a commitment to continue this work, the city and county had to absorb those costs. That's how we ended up with a contract with Hillard Heinz. It was done by sole source, and I think this question was asked earlier. Hillard Heinz, because they had already worked with us, had the institutional knowledge of working with the department, and a part of what went into this is Hillard Heinz had been involved in all the community focus groups and all the processes that led us to the 272 recommendations. So, they were the one contractor in this country that knew this department, because they had already worked with us, which qualified this for a sole source. And when that contract was approved and executed by the Civil Service Commission, then they took on this work. I want to add to this also, because of non-disclosure agreements with the USDAOJ, none of the work that was submitted before could be used. We had to basically start over because of the arrangement with the USDAOJ. So, none of the work that Hillard Heinz had engaged in with the USDAOJ could be used. In other words, all the packets and all the information that we had submitted, we had to resubmit and start over. Well, this gave us an opportunity to actually make the process better. We saw some weaknesses, some things that could be strengthened in the way it was structured with the USDAOJ. So, when we engaged with Hillard Heinz on a second go-round and the California DOJ, once we signed the MOU, as you see in the next timeline, September, next page, September 2018, we knew that we could do a better job in terms of strengthening the process and making the process more, number one, more stringent, and secondly, more defined in terms of what this compliance actually looked like. Because under the previous arrangements, how it worked was we self-assessed, we did the work, we said, "We believe we're there, we completed it," we turned it in and submitted it to the USDAOJ, and what was supposed to happen was an evaluation, a report, letting everybody who was interested know whether or not the work was actually done. There were no compliance standards, there were no compliance measures in that previous arrangement. So, we felt that we could do better, and we worked with the collaborative partners, the California DOJ and Hillard Heinz, to develop those compliance standards that Ms. Morgan mentioned. And we're gonna talk a little bit more about that later on in the presentation, so you can get a really clear idea of what that entails and what that means. So, in 2017, on the previous slide, as you saw, we had submitted 96 recommendations. Let me go back to the previous slide. 96 recommendations were submitted. We never got an evaluation on those 96 recommendations, because the work was terminated before the USDAOJ could get their first report out. Next slide. So, 2018, we have now a new set of collaborative partners, at least one new collaborative partner with the California DOJ, and there are no costs involved with our work with the California DOJ. Our cost in terms of consulting is with Hillard Heinz. Now, I want to spend just a second to talk about the compliance standards, because as Ms. Morgan and Mr. Durden stated, each one of the 272 had anywhere from three to eight compliance measures, which detail what needs to be done in order to get to a point of substantial compliance. One of the questions that's frequently asked, and let me just preface this by saying, we're as frustrated with the pace of things as probably anybody else is not more frustrated, because we know how much work is going into this, and we'd like to be further along in terms of the number of recommendations that are in substantial compliance, but we are where we are. And what I hope to accomplish here is to at least explain to the public and the board of what goes into this work that sometimes causes the work to take as long as it does. I talked a little bit about foundational measures that had to be put in place. Restructuring of the department, significant, because we had to go through a budgetary process to get funding for these positions. We had to reorganize the department, move people around, that type of thing. Also, what's substantial about these compliance measures, it took a number of months, almost actually more than a year, to actually hammer through all of those compliance measures before they all were completed, so we knew exactly what the measurement was. And if you look at the timeline, it wasn't until, if you look at the middle row there, 2019, May of 2019 is when we finally finalized the compliance measures for every one of the 272 recommendations. So, it took a significant amount of time. The contract with Hillard Heinz, the new contract that we engaged in, was instituted in June of 2018. It took us 11 months to get to actually hammering out all those compliance measures until we had them all done, and now we're ready to actually measure up to the compliance measures that were put in place. Well, in the meantime, some of the work, the foundational work, was still getting done. Mr. Durden mentioned the general orders, the use-of-force general order, the, I think Supervisor Ronan mentioned, the body worn camera general order, that had already been completed but has been revised since then. And those general orders, some of them unfortunately took a couple of years for us to actually get through the whole process, the community input process, the work group process, to finalize adoption by the Police Commission. And then even after that, some of them by law require meet and confer. And I'm gonna talk later in the presentation about some of the things that we've done to expedite some of the delays that we've identified and that we're talking about here today. And I do believe we made significant progress on identifying where the delays are and actually expediting the process. But as you look at the timeline, what is a consistent theme here is that, to Mr. Durden's point about institutionalizing these processes, so even after they're gone and the California Department of Justice are gone, we have a system that is sustainable. January 2020 is one example of that. The five-year, if you look at that first dot, January, the five-year policy review mandate, first time in this Police Department's history where we've had a mandate to actually look at every one of our general orders on a five-year rotating basis. And if it needs revising, we will revise it to stay current and relevant to modern-day policing and to what the will of the people of the city expect from us. It's the first time we ever done that, and it's a very aggressive mandate, but it's in place now. The Police Commission, it took us well over a year to hammer out 3.01, that written directive, general order, that actually sets that in place. But now it's done, and that's gonna be one of the things that will help sustain this work beyond my time here and all of our times here. That'll help us stay in front of the curve in terms of making sure that this reform is sustained. Our general order on use-of-force, which was a major revision at the time in 2016 when it was revised, it had been revised in many, many years. And just to illustrate the importance of how we are now a more nimble department with our general orders, after all the incident with Mr. Floyd in Minneapolis, we saw some gaps in our use-of-force policy. We jumped on it, the Commission jumped on, and we were able to actually revise the policy and get it through the Commission and get it approved in less than six weeks, which is phenomenal. And that's because of the way we revised 3.01 that gave us the ability to do that. And, you know, that really speaks to what this work is all about. It's about sustaining the effort and being in a position to be nimble and make the changes that are needed to be made so we can be the best Police Department we can be. Also, before we move to the next slide, the Community Policing DGO, if you look at October of 2020, is another example of how long this went, what's involved in this work. That DGO was two years, two-plus years in the making, and it had a tremendous amount of community input and process. In fact, over 500 hands and opinions touched that DGO. We reached out and we did surveys, there were work group meetings. Commander, now Deputy Chief David Lazar, did a phenomenal job with getting the community involved. We brought in the Controller's Office, who helped facilitate a lot of these discussions. We had Commissioners on board, so this process is a good process, but it takes time. It really does take time, and I think it's the right thing to do from a policymaking perspective, because if you, anybody that listened in, when that policy finally went to the Police Commission last month, the people who were involved, many of them called in to express how satisfied they were with this policy and the processes and all. But the one thing that we can't take away from is it took us over two years to get there. Very satisfied with the outcome, not satisfied that it took us two years. So, at the end of this all, I hope that there's a better understanding of what goes into some of the work that causes the delays. It's not making excuses, because one of the things we're committed to doing, as you will see in this presentation, we identify what's causing delays, is try to fix it. So, the last thing on this timeline, where we are right now today, actually, we're actually a little ahead of this, is you see the last red dot on the bottom right of your screen, 114 completed recommendations, and I want to break that down. Of those 114, 86 are in substantial compliance. The remainder of them are with the evaluators for approval or validation, as we call it. And even that process, just to explain a little bit of what that means, we, working with Hillard Heinz, have created a pre-screening process, where we weren't doing this at the beginning, where now we've gotten to a point, as Mr. Durden, with the cadence and the rhythm, where we really try to flush out issues that might hang us up and slow us down during this pre-screening. So, when we think we're about at the end of this process, it's pre-screened by Hillard Heinz, and we work through the issues, and they may say, "Hey, you're here on four, five of the compliance measures, but number six, you need a little bit more here." And then we go back and we get a little bit more before we submit it, because in the contract and MOU, the California DOJ has 45 days to review these and turn them around. So, we know that, you know, that's a month and a half. What we'd like to do, and this process has done for us, is we're pretty confident, by the time we get to the pre-screening, that when we submit them, they're ready to go, and there's no other questions that are gonna be needed to be addressed. And we've had 100% success rate since we've implemented this pre-screening process, where once they get to the point where we are submitting them to Hillard Heinz and the California DOJ, they've gone through and been found in substantial compliance. So, breaking down the 114, 86 of them are already in substantial compliance. The remainder, which I believe is 28, are in that review process. We're confident that they will be found in substantial compliance, because we have had a very good, as I explained, success rate since we started this pre-screening process earlier this year. So, in all intents and purposes, we're at 114. Next slide, please. Strategic planning, I mentioned earlier to, I think it was Supervisor Walton's question, about, you know, the remainder of the recommendations. As you look through, if you have, you know, had the time or taken the time to read through the recommendations, one of the foundational pieces of work that ring through this reform effort is strategic planning. And really, that's the foundation for implementing and sustaining reform. And there are a number of recommendations that tie directly into creating strategic plans. So, next slide. So, in 2017, working with the mayor's office, we actually, through the Civic Bridges program, were able to work with a very reputable consulting firm that helped us form our strategic initiatives, which you see in front of you. And everything that we do in terms of strategic planning really is born from these five strategic initiative clusters. Now, this work took about a year. Again, you're asking why things take so long. This took about a year for us to get to this point, actually about eight months for us to get to this point. But what it did is it created the foundation that now our strategic planning has, you know, purpose with these initiative clusters, that everything kind of feeds into this. And as you can see, I won't read through all of them, but, you know, it's, the leading one is collaboration, because that is really what this work and police work is all about, and then everything else flows from there. Next slide, please. And this process actually led to our strategy statement, which you see in front of you, which, to Mr. Durden's point about constitutional policing, treating people with dignity and respect, this collaborative effort with the consultant led to this strategy statement. And really, this is who we are and what we stand for, and so everything kind of flows through this. You know, safety with respect and really treating people with respect and a transparent, unbiased, and responsive policing. And these are our ideals. Now, you know, like with any ideal, now the focus is trying to reach our ideals consistently. And there have been times where, you know, things happen that we fall short. But we always will strive to be this department, who treats everybody that we deal with with respect, engaged and adjusted, transparent, unbiased way. And this is a part of institutionalizing, as Mr. Durden pointed out, this reform process. You really have, this has to be who we are and what we do. Next slide, please. Investment and organizational structure. Again, just to reemphasize what I said earlier, next slide, in terms of how important it is to lay the foundation to be successful at this work. Oftentimes, people ask, "Well, what's taken so long? Why does it take so long to do these recommendations?" You know, we started with an over $10 million investment from the start. I think it was more like 17 to $22 million investment to really lay the foundation for reform. That's a significant amount of money, and I think it's well worth it, because as we see now across this country, when police departments don't operate the way they should, we see the results, which are disastrous. So, this slide illustrates how that has played out over the years and how it's impacted our budget. As you can see, the trend lines are going up, and as the reform initiative was initiated in 2016 and going into 2017, we made some significant investments. Equipment, services, personnel, training, they all are included in this process. And these things, you know, they don't happen overnight. So, this illustrates kind of what those investments look like, and we'll go to the next slide. I talked about reorganization of the Police Department. 2017, February, we started the reorganization. What you see in yellow are additions to our structure. And for the most part, this supports oversight, it supports internal processes that will drive reform and sustain reform. And a couple that I want to mention specifically, based on Supervisor Ronan's question, because I want to be responsive to her question. Yeah, the meeting and confer process, it sometimes takes more time than we would like. And, but legally, it's required in many instances now. The Police Commission has been very aggressive on making sure that only those policies that legally require meet and confer actually go to meet and confer, and there's been a lot of work done on that. So, I think that has been achieved, but I just want to make it clear that some policies, we're obligated to go by law to meet and confer, and we don't have a choice on that. We're guided by our city attorney's advice, and our city attorney, who has the city's best interests at heart, steers that ship in terms of which one of these go to meet and confer. And that is, you know, DHR also weighs in on that as well, because they are the entity responsible citywide for meet and confer. Now, one of the things that we've done to speed up the process is on this chart. If you see in the right, lower right and yellow, the Director of Labor Relations, we have actually hired the Director of Labor Relations from DHR, so she and her assistant now work directly for the Police Department. What that has done for us is it has expedited in a great way the meet and confer process. Before, when they were at DHR, we were competing with other departments, because they had the whole city, or whatever departments they were responsible for, and even competing with calendar time to even hold these meetings. Now that they are focused on the Police Department, what we've seen since they came aboard earlier this year is meet and confer has gone much quicker. Everything that was in the queue, with the exception of one, has gone through the process successfully. And we're talking about in a five-month period of time, not even five months. So, we do believe this addition was significant in terms of speeding up the timeline moving forward, and these are the type of adjustments that now we are able to make, because we are structured in the right way. Go to the next slide, please. So, now I'm gonna get to the meat of the reform itself. Next slide. There are five categories of collaborative reform, and I know the magic question for us is, where are you, how many have you completed, how many have been found in substantial compliance? As I've already stated on a previous slide, we're at 86 as of today, and with many more in the queue that we believe will be found in substantial compliance. 28 being reviewed, and we have many more that are coming. We do have a plan, I think one of the, I don't remember which Supervisor, I think it might have been Supervisor Pesk, can ask about stratification and planning. We've had that from the start, and as Mr. Durden pointed out, I want to just highlight, use-of-force was really one of our focuses, because that was what got us here. You know, everything is important. Let me say, everything is important, but you have to have focus and priorities. And as was stated earlier, 5.01, our use-of-force DGO, our main use-of-force DGO, the priority was there, and that was done two months after the report was issued. And the work has been constant. And use-of-force, we're further along than any other of the five categories. As of today, we're closer to 60% complete with use-of-force, and we have plans to be probably in the 80s by the time. There's a lot of talk about the ending of the contract. We think we'll be probably over 80%, closer to 90, when we're done. And we do have a plan with specific recommendations that we plan to get to within the next six months. We did not send that to the Commission as a part of the agenda, but we can definitely get that, I mean, to the Board, but we definitely can get that, because it's in writing, we have it, and it's a part of our planning process. The other, I want to make sure that I'm clear on this. It's not that the other categories aren't important, accountability is very important, bias-free policing is very important, as is community policing and recruitment and hiring. The caveat here is we recognize that use-of-force was one of the things that got us here. You know, the often-involved shootings that have been mentioned, the use-of-force, the disparities in use-of-force, which is still a challenge, but we are getting better. We've reduced use-of-force significantly, and we've reduced the disparities. I'm not saying that we haven't solved yet, we still have a lot of work to do, but we've seen significant progress there. You know, we had an often-involved shooting this past week, but it was the first fatal in over two years. We dropped a seven-and-a-half-year average in the last 20 years on often-involved shootings to less than one over the last two years. So, I mean, over the last 30 months. So, those are things that we're definitely proud of, but we're not resting on that, because there's certainly a lot more work to be done. So, from the remainder of the presentation, we're gonna go into each one of these five categories, explain what the highlights are, where we are, and then we'll get through the end, and we'll, I'm sure you'll have other questions, and hopefully I can answer as many of them as possible. Next slide, please. 272 recommendations, as Ms. Morgan stated, each one of the recommendations now has compliance measures. And I mentioned, it took us 11 months to really craft all of those compliance measures after we engaged with the contract with Hillard Heinz. Of that, that means that there's 995 compliance measures. Now, our assessment, and we assess our work all the time, and one of the things that's been really difficult prior to these compliance measures, for us to really explain the work in progress, is you see here in this chart, 663 of the compliance measures. 663 of the compliance measures have been completed. Now, of that 663, I want to make it clear, some of that is self-assessment and just working with our collaborative partners and checking in and seeing where we are on things, as I talked about with the with the pre-screening and and working with our collaborative partners like we're supposed to for technical assistance. And some of those are actually verified finished recommendations in terms of recommendations that are have been found in substantial compliance. But the total sum is 663, which is about two-thirds of the work we have completed. Compliance measures and process, that lead to progress, rather, that leaves 332. And as I stated earlier, you know, some of those are going to be more challenging than others because of budgetary conditions and and the like. We've identified those, and we're going to work through that as well. But we do plan to finish each one of those, 332. So we're done with all 272 recommendations. Next slide, please. Here, again, illustrates kind of the the process of of how the process works in terms of reform and policy revisions and policy issuance. So I I'll start really at the bottom. If you look at identification is to the left of the bottom, toward the bottom, California DOJ and CRI identification. And part of this process is, I think Ms. Morgan stated, or no, Mr. Durden actually stated this, when asked about what what the what the what the validation of the feedback loop, the continuous improvement loop. So as we, as we crafted the these these compliance measures, which, by the way, we asked for, the police department asked for that, we asked for help on that. One of the things that the technical assistance provided was in almost every measure, there's a either a a feedback loop or a continuous improvement loop. And what that means is when the California DOJ, Department of Justice, and Hillard Hines, the consultant, are done, then we have a way to keep the work going, because we're always looking for continuous improvement and look and looking for feedback of our work. That's through audits, that's through assessments, that's through debriefings, that's through, which are implemented in our operational procedures now. So we have this continuous feedback loop that's a part of the reform, and that's how things are institutionalized. You keep hearing that word, how do we institutionalize? In other words, also, how do we change the culture? We change the culture by being a department that's always looking to be better. Even when we do things right, we can still do things better. And that's what this work has given us, is the ability to do that. If you follow the circle to the right clockwise, executive sponsors and leadership. The way our work is broken down is we have commanders of police, who each hold the role of executive sponsor. So those five categories of reform, each one is responsible for one of those categories. And they have leadership teams, project managers, if you will, that go throughout the ranks and chain of command, that help implement the recommendations and and get the work done. And that is all documented and tracked by our our Strategic Management Bureau, headed by professional staff, non-sworn executive person, Executive Director Catherine McWire, which was another structural change that we made. And then what flows out of that are the workshops and the workgroups and the community process and the input that strengthens our policymaking ability and gives the community input. And, you know, we've had some challenges there and working through that. But I believe I believe we're in a much better place, as evidenced by what we heard from community members in our latest commission meeting when our community policing DGO was approved and when our bias DGO was approved a couple of months ago. So we we improved. And then the Police Commission, which is the oversight body of the Police Commission, the, I mean, of the Police Department, is the the Police Commission is the oversight body. Now, there's other forms of accountability. We're, of course, accountable to the board of supervisors. We're, of course, accountable to the community we serve. But the Police Commission is the oversight body. They hire and fire the chief, they set policy, they are the oversight body. They impose any discipline over 11, 10 days or more. So that is our oversight body, and they are involved in this process. As was stated earlier, we now give updates to the commission on a monthly basis on collaborative reform. Matter of fact, our next update is tomorrow night. And we do that on a monthly basis. They've been involved in this process from the start, though. I just want to reemphasize that, that they've had a role in this process from the start, but they are the oversight. That's how the charter is set up, that's how we're set up in this city, and they do provide that oversight. And then we come to the right side, the bottom of the meet and confer process. To Supervisor Ronan's point, yes, it can be frustrating. Yes, there was a time where some policies went to meet and confer that probably shouldn't have. Those issues have been resolved and worked out. We think we're in a much better place. We've identified the deficiencies, and we've done everything in our power to improve those deficiencies. We have now the Labor Relations Director in the Police Department, and it's expedited that process. So we believe we're in a good place. The Police Commission has been very aggressive about not allowing policies to go to meet and confer that don't need to go to meet and confer. DHR works with us very well, and we are in a much better place with that. So what we believe you will see moving forward is a expedited meet and confer process, where we don't have the type of delays we've seen in the past. And so far, that's been true, particularly this year. And then, if we're successful with all that, policy issuance. And then the circle just repeats itself. Policy issuance is not meant to be forever. Part of this process of reform is we have to identify when our policies become stale and outdated, and we have to have the ability to change them quickly in some cases. And now we have that ability because of 3.01, we're set up to do that. So that's really the 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 basis of the process and how it works. And again, there's a lot of work that goes into this. And oftentimes, when we're asked, you know, why are things taking so long? You know, we don't, we don't want to try to offer excuses. What we want to do is identify why things are taking so long and fix them. And we have had some issues with that, and I think we are well along in terms of fixing many of those issues. And I think that's gotten us to where we are now. As Mr. Durden has described, we're in a really good cadence right now. So I'm going to say one other thing and turn it over temporarily to Deputy Chief Yi. But with the cadence, you'll see this at the end, but I want to say it now, just to introduce this thought to to everybody. We do have a plan. Our our goal is to get to substantial compliance, at least, I think the number is 120 within the next six months or so. 120, which will put us at roughly 334, I think, is the exact number, if we're successful. And I'm sorry, 234, 234, which is the exact number. We may go above that. You know, we're going to do everything in our power to go above that. And I want to say this, because I, it looked like we, the conversation was putting doubt in people's minds in terms of the commitment. And I don't think Mr. Durden was intending to say that we don't intend to get to this work. The reality is that because of circumstances beyond anybody's control, we may not be able to complete every one of the 272 by the end of Hillard Hines' contract. We intend to complete them, though, contract or not. So I just want to make sure that I reemphasize that. And we're going to complete as many as we can while we have the advantage of technical assistance and the collaborative partners involved in this work, which we believe that number will be around 334. So now I will shift it over to Deputy Chief Yi for the first collaborative reform topic or category, recruitment, hiring and personnel practices.
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Greg Yi.
Mr. President, there's some echo from Mr.
Yeah, I hear it too.
Shall we do videos?
Yeah, Supervisor, what we'll do is we're going to have to minimize the the presentation for a second until we can mute. And then we'll put it right back up, because I think the feedback's coming from us.
Okay, go ahead.
How's that? Is that better? Good afternoon, supervisors. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Good afternoon, supervisors. I'm Greg Yi, the Deputy Chief of Administration Bureau, which oversees the recruitment and hiring of San Francisco police officers. The San Francisco Police Department has worked collaboratively with Cal DOJ, Hillard Hines, department members and stakeholders to support the recruitment, hiring and personnel practices recommend recommendations outlined in the Collaborative Reform Initiative Assessment. Next slide, please. The San Francisco Police Department is committed to recruiting and hiring the best and most diverse police officers to serve the San Francisco community with safety and respect. Through the collaborative reform initiatives, the department's diversity strategic plan was developed. This plan is a comprehensive roadmap to guide the organization's commitment to department-wide diversity initiatives. The plan identifies five strategic goals, which includes diversity in recruitment, hiring, training, retention and organizational accountability. The members of the San Francisco Police Department's Recruitment Unit are committed to focused outreach to inform, support, mentor and recruit a diverse group of potential police officer candidates. Examples of their outreach include attending recruitment fairs, forums, using multimedia advertising campaigns and hosting workout and mock oral practice sessions. Due to COVID-19, it has reset our recruitment efforts and strategies, but we are still focused on recruiting within, from within the San Francisco community and supporting those applicants interested in a career in San Francisco. Another initiative that was created was the Staffing and Deployment Unit, the creation of the Staffing and Deployment Unit. Through the Staffing and Deployment Unit, it provides process mapping, data analytics and reporting that provides a feedback loop and performance measures on our efforts in recruitment, hiring, retention and and our deployment of our personnel. Next slide, please. There has been a steady decline in police officer applicants, and this is consistent with what we have seen with other police departments across the country. Some factors for this decline include competing with the private sector for, to attract qualified candidates, a strong regional economy and the public's perception of policing. Once applicants successfully complete the testing process, which includes a written test, oral interview and physical ability tests, the Police Department conducts a comprehensive background investigation that is designed to screen out applicants by identifying and weeding out the unfit. Once qualified and desirable applicants have been identified, they are eligible to participate in an upcoming academy class. Next slide, please. The information on this slide shows a shift in the demographic makeup of our police academy classes. Percentage of white recruits have decreased over the years, and the percentage of Hispanic recruits have increased. Over the past five years, the percentage of non-white individuals entering the SFPD Academy is over 50%. Next slide, please. The department is committed to recruiting and hiring female police officers. In 2017, the department focused on female applicants through a targeted advertising campaign, which included physical ability and workout sessions three times a month. In 2019, 22% of the recruits who entered the academy were female. This was the highest percentage of females in the past 12 years. Females make up approximately 13% of law enforcement agencies nationwide. The department is committed to maintaining our recruitment efforts to exceed the national average. As of October 2020, the San Francisco Police Department's sworn makeup is 85% male and 15% female. Thank you.
Okay, so we had to minimize it to unmute, and we're going to go into bias-free policing. The next category. Next slide, please. So let's start with some some ownership here of the the state of the reality of where we are. And there's been many data sources that have indicated, including the US DOJ assessment, that there are some many disparities that we have to deal with a- as a police department and as a city and county in terms of policing, particularly people of color, Latinx and 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 blacks, African-American, Hispanics. And some of the things that we definitely acknowledge that we have to figure out and do better in are before you on the screen. And I want to just spend a second to go go through that piece. The Center for Policing Equity, which is one of the the academic partners that we're engaged with, has done a look at our data, which is a little bit more timely, a little bit more timely than the US DOJ assessment, because it goes up to 2018, the first part of 2018. But it really kind of points to some of the same, some of the same findings in terms of the per capita stop rate of black drivers, two, two and a half times higher than that of white drivers or Latinx drivers, four times higher than Asian drivers. Black residents estimated to be 19, or nearly 19 times more likely to have force used upon them to white residents in the same neighborhood. Latinx were almost twice likely to have force used upon them. Use of force incidents being 1.2 times more likely to involve pointing a firearm when a community member was black rather than white. And then another significant finding, between 2016 and 2018, there was a overall decline in the disparity in the use of force. And we we actually happy with that progress, but we have a long way to go on this one. And so this is really important to us in terms of working with communities of color. Some of the most difficult in terms of crime issues that we have to face in our city are in 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 those same communities. So this this is, this is definitely a priority for us. Next slide, please. And as I talk about this, you know, I want to make sure that everybody understands that, yeah, we we own this. And we are committed to doing better, and that's what this reform is about, knowing that there's a lot of work that remains to be done. So, you know, one of the guiding principles in terms of our police department is treating people, all people with dignity, fairness and respect. And really, that's what, that's really the foundation of bi- bias-free policing. And as was mentioned, you know, we are doing a lot of work in this area. There are in total 54 recommendations that deal with bias-free policing. And there is a lot of work to be done. Now, currently, we're at a about 20% substantial compliance rate. But I would like to point out, as I said earlier in one of the earlier slides, we have completed many of the compliance measures on many of the recommendations that remain to be submitted for review, but we don't have all of the compliance measures. So there is a significant amount of work that has been done and that is continually done in this area. And we are dedicated to making sure that we improve in this area. Next slide. A couple of highlights about some of our our progress in this area was mentioned by Ms. Morgan, our Department General Order 5.17, which is our policy on prohibiting biased policing. And, you know, that that the process that I described earlier with community input, the biased working group with members throughout the community that that helped us craft that policy, the California DOJ, Department of Justice, that provided their technical assistance, Hillard Hines providing their technical assistance, that's what this process is about. And I know this particular general order took over two years to get to the finish line. And this is one that went to meet and confer and was done within a couple of months, if that, after we brought the Labor Director on board. So I I hope that gives some indication that we've made a significant progress in terms of creating the systems and the infrastructure to be successful here. And as was mentioned by Ms. Morgan, as far as we know, this is the first policy that we know of that even talks about bias by proxy and gives some guidance on how to deal with that. And Supervisor Walton, I know this resonates with you, with the CAREN Act. And this policy supports that type of legislation, because in the event that somebody does use their own bias to cause in a situation where we shouldn't be there, it gives our officers some guidance on how to handle that situation, that we're not going to act on other people's biases and make the situation worse. So I mean, this is, this is good work, thanks to our many partners, collaborative and community partners on this. But this is a an example and the reason we're highlighting this. Is this an example? this, is this an example of what reform is in this city and what it can be and what it can be moving forward. Our Department General Order 5.22, interacting with transgender, gender variant and non-binary individuals. Another policy that, you know, we're a leader in, that other folks are looking at, other departments are looking at in terms of this type of policy. And again, work groups, community process, leadership from the police commission, all the things that had to come together to get this policy past the finish line is what reform is all about. So these aren't in and of themselves the final answer. The final answer.
Chief Scott?
Yes.
I just wanted to remind you, you're only halfway through your slides and we need to get through them. So anything that you could do to sort of speed it up would be appreciated.
Yes, sir, we will. I think we will be able to speed it up from this point forward because I've already covered some of what's in some of the remainder slides. So next slide please. Thank you. Again, I mentioned our stops and our searches have all declined and we've made progress. And this slide, what I want to highlight is the blue, the blue line is white, the orange line is African-American. The most significant declines in this area is in the, on the orange line. When you look at the statistics here that we've made more progress in reducing the number of stops in the African-American category, which is where we were the highest. Next slide please. Next category, use of force. Again, I've already talked a lot about use of force, so I should be able to get through this one pretty quickly. Next slide. Already talked about 5.01 and laid that foundation. So you all know that is our, our key use of force general order. And this process has helped us not only revise that, but now revise it a second time. Training has everything to do with our success here. We created a field tactics and force options unit in our training division about a year and a half ago, a year ago, actually, a little over a year ago. And what that does is that continuous improvement loop, looking at ways to get better, reviewing our critical incidents, our use of forces, our shootings, officer-involved shootings, and taking that information to get better. That's what that unit does. And then data and reporting, which is a ongoing constant evolution of trying to get better. And this is one of the areas where we've had some delays because of funding and what, and whatnot, just the technology needed to get us to where we need to be. We will continue to work forward on that, but there are some challenges there. Next slide. Again, real quickly, I've already talked about some of this, so I just want to just point out the process again. Working with the commission through their leadership, working with community, working with the Department of Police Accountability to always put ourselves in a position to revise policies when those revisions are needed. That's what recommendation 3.1 and 3.2 are about. We've been found in substantial compliance with both of those. And I think that is one of the reasons that we were so quickly able to adjust our use of force policy when we saw gaps after the George Floyd incident. Next slide please. And this has already been stated, but I'll just quickly, we really have, we are really happy with this particular graphic and statistic and our constantly being able to reduce use of force from 2016 to now. Part of it is the accountability and the board passing 96A and that data had to be collected, which gave us constant reminders of where we are. But we, you look at where we were then and where we are now, and that's significant progress in terms of reducing use of force. Next slide. And again, this just is the ethnic breakdown. As you can see, the sharpest decline is with the African-American demographic. And again, that's something that we're proud of the progress, but we have a long way to go because we still have disparities. And then in the right corner, talked a little about, a bit about the officer-involved shootings and the reduction. This slide just shows a 20-year look at officer-involved shootings. And you can see that our average now, on a rolling average, is significantly reduced from where it was and where it's been over the past 20 years. Next slide. So this slide just illustrates the volume of calls and the proportionality of how many force incidents we use. And it also shows the decline over time, where cost of service have increased, force has gone down, pointing of a firearm has gone down significantly, 50, almost 60%, 57.3%, and officer-involved shootings has gone down significantly. So this just illustrates that in a graphical representation. Next slide please. Next slide, I'm going to turn this over briefly to Commander Denise Flaherty. And this is something that we really want the board to see because we are asked quite often, how do we know it's working? How is it getting to the rank and file officers? And this is a video of our training that we've implemented. And Commander Flaherty, who was Captain Flaherty at the time, when she was at Training Division, that actually was one of the architects of this training. I want to give her a shout out on that. But it's our coordinated response and critical mindset training, critical mindset and coordinated response, rather. But you will see what this training has done for the rank and file in terms of how they think, how they approach situations, and how the training has impacted how they do business, which is what reform is all about. So we'll turn it over to Commander Flaherty at this point.
Thank you, Chief Scott. President Yee, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Before I jump into critical mindset and coordinated response, I'm going to do a brief overview of accountability for you. Good evening supervisors, I am Commander Denise Flaherty. And in July of 2019, Chief William Scott appointed me as the executive sponsor of accountability. Accountability team has 20 project managers working together on the completion of 68 recommendations. Within each recommendation are set of compliance measures. Quite simply, a compliance measure is a task we must complete in order to reach substantial compliance of a recommendation. The number of compliance measures within said recommendations can vary. There are 226 compliance measures within the accountability objective. And to date, our team has successfully completed 199, resulting in only 27 compliance measures left for us to focus on. As an executive sponsor, I know that true sustainable reform goes beyond policy reform. It requires collaboration, so we may broaden our perspective on policing. It has demanded an expansion of how we document best practices, and it has showed us the importance of the audit and improvement loop, ensuring the sustainability of reform and allowing us to build on what we have achieved. Next slide. Through the Staff Inspections Unit, we have developed an auditing plan and schedule for both routine and risk audits. By prioritizing the audits, we have the ability to identify key risks and operational issues within the department. We have broadened our partnership and collaboration with the Department of Police Accountability, revising General Order 2.04, Complaints Against Officers, and establishing the Discipline Review Board, which will examine inefficiencies, policy gaps and protocols for the complaint system and discipline process. For our community, we have expanded our reporting process on complaints and discipline in officer-involved shooting, ensuring transparency for our community. With our partners at the Department of Police Accountability, community workshops are held, affording our community an understanding of the complaint process and the roles and responsibilities of each agency. Our work on these recommendations has guided us in the development of practices that measure, analyze and assess trends in officer misconduct. It has raised our awareness in the trends for complaints and has increased transparency by collecting and sharing of data, policies and procedures with the public. We have developed and completed training on the complaint process, internal investigations and the role of organizational accountability. Next slide. As mentioned previously, through our broadened partnership with the Department of Police Accountability, we have codified monthly meetings with DPA. We have a developed biannual training for both DPA staff and SFPB internal affairs. This offers us consistency and clarity with the complaint and discipline process. Collaboratively, we have developed a disciplinary penalty and referral guidelines for sworn members, assuring timeliness of complaint investigations and basis for recommending progressive discipline. As we have worked through accountability recommendations, we have done some through the lens of how do we hold ourselves accountable and how will we hold each other accountable? An important piece about accounting comes with training. In 2018, our officers experienced events that caused us to take pause and say, we can do better. We brought together subject matter experts that were incredibly knowledgeable and highly respected. Our goal is to create reality-based training for the safe resolution of high-risk incidents. This training would be driven by five guiding principles: assessment and reassessment, planning and coordination, leadership, and finally, the ever-important debrief, a process in which our officers can openly and honestly critique each other's action with a strong understanding that accountability is vital to our success. In 2019, critical mindset and coordinated response training began. And since its implementation, our officers have committed to the principles of this training, which means we have seen better outcomes through leadership and coordination, improving ourselves through self and team reflection. And finally, we have seen how mindset combined with action can change the culture of policing. On Thursday, the critical mindset and coordinated response training model will be presented at the International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference. We are honored to be presenting, highlighting this important training and the commitment of our officers. At this time, we would like to share with you a portion of the presentation, which is an officer testimonial video on how their responses have been with critical mindset and coordinated response training.
Patrol officers want training. Patrol officers want to be better, but patrol officers have to be given that opportunity to do so. CMCR and the concept that we teach are making police officers more interested because they're showing there's a vested interest and that we care in them doing things better. We care in them being safer. We care about them evolving and we care about them learning together and getting better as a team. So one thing I do see on patrol is officers that are eager and hungry to debrief. Officers are eager and hungry to be able to coordinate together. Officers that are eager and hungry to train together and to, and to be prepared for these situations. The feedback that we're seeing is not only positive, but seeing a difference on the street is how we know that it's really hitting home and that the officers are really getting it. Because if they're practicing it and we're seeing it in real-life situations and in real-life areas on the street, then we know that the product that's being pushed out there, the training that's being pushed out there is actually working.
I'm noticing that like officers that are coming to the training are actually, they're eager to learn something new, to learn tactics that they can implement on the street. I believe this is probably one of the most important trainings that we, as a department, have had in a very long time. It's very, it's kind of what the department needs right now. It's how, just being able to slow things down, be able to work as a team, be able to come up with a game plan and be able to complete the call safely, just not just for the community, but for us as officers as well.
You're seeing people become leaders. You're seeing sergeants let people take over scenes if they have a good control of it. You see supervisors taking a step back, looking at the whole picture rather than supervisors being in the mix with you. And you can have other people who are on scene give you different insights because everyone sees things differently.
When I was a newly promoted sergeant out on patrol, I came across an incident where I thought we could have done better. I was approached by an officer who in fact wanted to do better, said he saw a lot of things that were, in his eyes, not done correctly. So that kind of stuck with me. And then when I started getting involved with the critical mindset and coordinated response course, the biggest thing that, that I kind of latched onto was the debriefing process. We've incorporated it into the course and we get officers comfortable in speaking to each other in a group setting, right? So it's not just the supervisor that sparks this debrief process. It could be a junior officer, it could be a senior officer, every scenario, every situation, every call for service that you go to, there's always something positive and always something that we could work on in regards to that incident. And we can apply it to the future so we become comfortable communicating that with one another. And at the end of the day, I think it's only going to better our profession and make us better as a whole, especially the San Francisco Police Department.
Before, I never really like broke down what, like why I made the decision I made. But now like after taking the CMCR, debriefing has really helped me learn from my mistakes. Also, it has created better communication with my partner. Now we know how each other works. Every day, every situation, we use debriefing as a way to learn from each other.
After CMCR, me and my partner, we debrief every single call and it just makes us stronger. It allows people to open up, talk about what they did right, what they could work on. It helps everyone learn and learn from every situation. Every call we go to is different. No two calls are the same. And by conducting debriefs, even in the most mundane of situations, you can debrief and figure out what you're doing wrong. In situations that are calm, it's only going to make you better during high-stress situations. And during a high-stress situation, if you're able to slow things down and see it from different lenses, it just makes you a better officer.
I think one important aspect to CMCR is that it's relevant to our officers. And when I say it's relevant, it's what our officers do on an everyday basis. High-risk felony stops, car, high-risk pedestrian stops. It's something that they can utilize immediately. It involves concepts of teamwork and leadership. If you think about a high-stress situation, if every officer is working together as a team and not each officer has an individual plan on how they want to resolve the situation, it's going to come out, it's going to work out a lot better. CMCR benefits its officers. It makes them safer. It makes the job, deal with high-stress situations, a lot easier.
I tend to rush things. And after CMCR, I try to take a step back. I try to look at the whole picture. I try to coordinate with other people on scene and see it from a different lens. I think I'm slowing things down more and it's becoming safer for everyone.
As a junior officer, I rely on senior officers to kind of handle a situation. But now I feel a lot more comfortable being able to, like if I see that they're stuck on something or an idea, I feel more comfortable approaching and asking like, hey, can we actually do something like this instead? And people, a lot more people are receptive to other people's opinions and their approach to things and just taking more of a team aspect to a situation instead of making individual actions.
So the more people are taking the course, we're actually seeing a lot more confidence on calls. And in my experience, I'm noticing like it's, all of it is not falling on one officer's shoulders as far as the leadership and game planning. It's kind of like a collaborative effort. A lot of times too, it's like you'll, things are being done before we even start work just because everyone's kind of like on the same game plan, on the same page with each other now. It's definitely been beneficial as far as just working the series and being able to be in the same place and a team head out.
Okay.
Go along.
Okay, thank you supervisors. So this is the last section, the last category, community policing. Just as short, everything leading up to this point in this presentation, all the other four reform categories really feed into what community policing is about. And that is four tennis of community policing, respect, partnership, honesty, actually five tennis, transparency, and then accountability. And the way reform is crafted here in this city, those five categories that we're talking about, ending with community policing, all go to our ability to garner trust. In some cases, rebuild trust and in some cases, gain trust when we've never had it. But when we do all the other things right, you know, we address bias, we address use of force and we reduce use of force and we reduce disparities and we address accountability and officers are held accountable and all the other things. We hire the right people and we do all those things right, then we can really thrive with our community policing vision and values. And I want to just point out, next slide please.
Mr. President. Mr. Chief, you've done a great job this evening and I am totally proud of you. But the one word that is missing from the community policing policies is longevity. Relationships and trust are established over time. And when people cycle through a district station or through a sergeant's position or through a commander position, and I understand promotional opportunities are important, but the people who are profoundly respected by a community are the people who have been there. And so the one thing that's missing from this is longevity.
Yes, sir. Supervisor Paskin, it's a really astute observation. And part of longevity is retaining the people we do have. As you know, we've spiked a little bit with the resignations and retirements over the past couple of years. But I think what you're getting to is transfers in and out of different departments and all. You know, with promotions, it's a little bit harder because when people retire and leave, we promote new people and revitalize the department. Yeah, but definitely with retention, hiring, it is about longevity. And also, you know, these reform categories really speak to us being that department as well, because we want to keep the talent that we hire. We hire We hire some really good people overall. And we want to make sure we keep them and keep them in assignments that they can thrive in. Yeah, there needs to be sometimes moving around to keep things fresh, but I do understand that and I get that. And I know with our district captain stations, that we have almost totally turned over to captains from four years ago when I got here, or three years and eight months ago when I got here, mainly due to retirements and promotions. But we have basically about eighty or more percent of our captains, were not captains in 2017 when I got here. So, that's a part of, you know, the process. And what we strive for is when we do have these turnovers, that we put them in a position to succeed by the training and by the structures that really give them an opportunity to succeed. And then we can leave them in place so that longevity can set in. And so, I do appreciate your observation, and it has been challenging. But we do believe that this structure will help us there as well.
And, Mr. President, I apologize for that interruption. And I was not talking about captains, I was talking about Q2s.
Oh, yes, sir. Okay, so, again, this, we only have one or two more slides, actually, three more slides. The, here are the results. Here is what illustrates where we are with the recommendations. Again, I said this earlier, but 114 completed. And that breakdown of 114, 86 are actually in substantial compliance. The other 28 are in external review. And we believe that they will be in substantial compliance within a very short amount of time. And then, here are the percentages per category. As you can see, use of force, we believe that we're 84% complete with the compliance measures. That doesn't mean 84% complete with the recommendations. Some of the compliance measures still may have one or two compliance measures to complete, but a substantial amount of work has been done with use of force and accountability. Commander Flaherty has that particular category. Bias 71, and community policing 66, recruitment, hiring, and personnel 40. Have a lot of makeup work to do there. And then, next slide. And just as we wrap this up, as you all know, reform has been a national discussion since the Floyd incident. And thankfully for us, we were already engaged in a collaborative reform process. So, we were well on our way. And many instances, we've been looked at with our policies and the things that we have done and been a model for other police departments. We get a lot of inquiries about what we're doing here in San Francisco, which is a good thing. But again, it doesn't take away from, we still have a lot of work to do. And lastly, I want to talk about the plan moving forward. You know, 80% of the recommendations are expected to be completed by the end of Phase 3. And as I said, that's going to put us around 234, probably higher if we can get some more in there. But at least 234 is our goal, and we have those recommendations identified. Well on our way, working with Hillary Hines and the California DOJ on making sure that those recommendations get across the finish line. So, and we are well on our way there. So, we do expect this cadence to even accelerate even more than it has in the last nine months. And I think we're in a very good place there. Next slide. And then, lastly, with Mayor Breed, she has four reform initiatives as well that really kind of work with what we're already doing. And as you can see on the screen, demilitarization, end of use of police response for noncriminal activity, and address police biases, bias and strength and accountability, redirect funding for racial equity. Every one of those four are in progress, in process, and they have begun. So, a lot of work to do on those, but we do believe that folds into our ongoing collaborative reform quite nicely and seamlessly, and we will move forward on those as well. And in the future, here are our plans to adopt a unified policy on data collection, which is one of the challenges with the data. Expand the definition of reportable use of force, which actually has already been done and approved by the Police Commission. Collect more detailed use-of-force information, already done and approved. Update policy on drawing firearms, already done and approved. Identify situational risk factors for discrimination. That is in progress. We actually have a equity team in place now with members of our command staff, and it goes in line with the City Administrative Code on Equity. And we're, hopefully, we will make significant progress on that in the next six months as well. We're well on our way there. And then, ongoing community engagement and dialogue. And then, reform sustainability, which we want to be in a position, after Hillary Hines and the US DOJ, I mean, the California DOJ, are concluded with their work, to sustain this work, to keep this department where it needs to be and where the community expects it to be. And with that, thank you for your time and allowing us a little bit of extra time to explain some of this, and we'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Chief Scott, and your team for presenting such a precise, short presentation. I, you know, this is along the line of Supervisor Hillary when she mentions the meeting confer process. And, you know, I've gone through it a few times already, and sometimes it's sort of legitimate in terms of what comes up as an excuse for meeting confer. And other times, it seems like, why are we sitting here after three or four meetings when it doesn't belong here? And I know that you mentioned that you have now a Labor Relations Director. But at the same time, I guess the question I have for you is, for all those different goals that you have, all the 900, whatever, things that you have to deal with, the, are you bringing up each issue one at a time and then have to discuss with the POA? Oh, it just doesn't belong to meeting confer because it's more administrative? Or are you, or are you stepping back, not you, but, you know, as a department, looking at the rest of the things that you need to discuss? And pretty much say, hey, by the way, don't bother us with these 200 that are left because they don't belong in meeting confer. Because if you do that, maybe you won't be wasting as much time because every meeting is time.
Yes, sir. So, just real quickly, now that we have the Director of Labor with us, she's involved in these conversations on reform. We have meetings weekly on reform, and we have meetings on policy weekly, two separate meetings. And those policy discussions that might trigger meeting confer, she's in those discussions. She can correspond with Department of Human Resources, the City Attorney's Office, you know, whoever's needed to be in those conversations to make sure that only those that need to go to meeting confer, go to meeting confer. And that's with the commission's oversight as well. They are very, very, like I said, they're very, very in tune with that subject, and that's with their oversight as well. So, that process, we believe, will streamline. And to, I think you asked about each one of the compliance measures. We don't look at individual compliance measures for meeting confer. It really stands with, if there's a policy or protocol or procedure that by law triggers meeting confer, those are the ones that will go to meeting confer. Policy-wise, because we have these meetings ongoing, we have an opportunity to know what's coming and what might be, what might trigger meeting confer before we even have to get there. So, the wheels are in motion. And we also have standing meetings with the POA now that we have Ms. Preston on board as the Labor Direction, Labor Director. We have meetings' calendar every month with the POA. So, those meetings are ongoing.
Okay, well, thanks for the answer. And I, hopefully, you know, we could get rid of the time wasted on discussing, discussing each of the criteria, whether it's meeting confer. I, you know, just make it clear that certain ones shouldn't even discuss upfront. So, I think Supervisor Walton has been very, very patient. He's, I see his name since 5:00. Go ahead, Supervisor Walton.
Thank you so much, President Yi. I'm going to try to be brief and just start off with the fact that this long presentation should be considered excessive use of force, at least in terms of violation, violating hazing laws in the state of California. But I just want to say, because I want everyone to understand where I'm coming from, as we talk about law enforcement reform, and this is a matter of urgency, and the number of years it's taken to achieve implementation of our recommendations obviously is very problematic. But more importantly, I don't feel we need a high-paid consultant to do the things that the department leadership is doing and can do. Just for example, I'm going back and forth with the Department of Public Health over $240,000 just to provide testing in all our hope SF sites. And we're paying 1.25 million plus an additional 600,000, not to mention what we paid on the front end for a high-paid consultant. And as I look at the data and the work of the department chief, definitely, any needle movement is happening on behalf of your work and your leadership. And so, I just, you know, I have to say that I don't understand what this consultant firm is getting paid for. We do have a long way to go. I see the work happening, but I don't understand why we're paying almost 2 million plus for a high-paid consultant when clearly the work is actually happening at the department level.
Yes, sir. So, I will be real brief, Supervisor Walton, because the tactical assistance is really important, particularly for this type of reform work. You know, unlike other types, consent decrees and whatnot, where the, really, the city usually has to bear a lot more cost. This is collaborative. So, to have experts who have the technical expertise to help implement reform is really important. And they've been very helpful in terms of guiding us on policy. Sometimes, it's a matter of them guiding us to the right source of information or, take a look at this department, we work with this department on this issue. Let's hook you guys up with them. You know, that's happened on a number of occasions. So, you guys can, you know, learn lessons from what they did. And so, that type of technical expertise, particularly at the beginning, to get us over the hump, is really, really important. As I stated in, Mr. Durden, and I think Ms. Morgan stated, you know, once we are done and have most of these recommendations completed, the ideal situation is we then can move on our own. And we have the institutional bandwidth and muscle memory to move on our own. But it's very difficult. And, you know, I want to point out that for many police departments aren't able to do it on their own without that type of technical assistance.
I definitely, I definitely don't want to, that was not a question, and I appreciate your support of the consultant. I just wanted to make a statement that I stand by. I don't think they deserve any more money from us.
Okay. Supervisor Preston?
Thank you, President Yi. And I know we have covered a lot of ground and have more to cover, so I'll keep it short. I will not repeat a lot of the sentiments that have been expressed by my colleagues that I agree with. But I did have a specific question, Chief Scott, just on the presentation and a couple, a couple of the slides, if we could just dive in. If we could pull back up, page 26 of your slides, which is the stops by perceived race. Because I want to make sure I'm understanding this. Are we able to display that or share that screen?
Yes.
Yes, yes. We're pulling it up right now.
Thank you. I think we lost it. I'm not seeing it.
Okay. Just one second, we're pulling the presentation back up.
Thank you.
This is slide 26.
Slide 26, yes. That, that, okay. Thank you. So, so, when you showed that, and I initially looked at it, my initial reaction was, wow, the numbers have gone down substantially. And I think this is being shown in the context of, and as an indicator or evidence of a decrease in bias in policing. And then, as I looked a little more closely at this, and I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. They, if you look at a particular category, like African-Americans who are stopped, right? The number declined significantly from that first quarter, 2018 there, to first quarter 2020, drops by, you know, 40-some-odd percent. Same if you look at Latino folks. But the overall number also drops, right? So, what this doesn't show me, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding this, like, if you were to plot this as a rate as opposed to just the absolute numbers here, it would, am I correct? It would be flat. In other words, we're not seeing an actual decrease through these numbers in the percent of people stopped who are African-American or the percent of people stopped who are Latino, right? We're seeing, we're seeing, oh, like, just looking at the totals here, like, the, there's an overall drop from, by my back of the envelope here, from like 30,000 people stopped during that first quarter you're looking at, and 17,000 stopped in that last quarter you looked at, right? But do you have something that shows the rates? In other words, per 100 people stopped, what percent of them are African-American? What percent of them are Latino? Because I think if we're talking about bias and bias in the number of stops, I mean, that's the relevant, it's the rate of people being stopped.
Yeah, well, this shows both, it doesn't show, this does not show the rate per capita. If that's your question, I think that's your question. This does not show a per capita rate. This just shows the decline with every category of ethnicity, white, black, African-American, Hispanic, Latino. Not per capita, 96A report does show the per capita there. And that, too, has declined some, not as much as, you know, we would like, not as much as we hope to achieve in the future, but it has declined. There has been some progress there as well, but this does not capture that. So, you are right there, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because my sense in the presentation was this was being shown as, in the context of talking about decreased bias in the department. That's, I believe, would be the purpose of a racial breakdown of this type. And it's the same, and we don't need to go through, you know, each one. But I think it's, you know, if you go a few slides ahead to the use of force, it's really the same thing. You see pretty dramatic decrease in the use of force upon African-American suspects, but it also, there's a corresponding decrease in the overall use of force. So, I just think when we're talking about bias and the extent that it exists, what would be more relevant in these presentations, to me, would be the rate. And I'm just concerned that presenting it in this way creates an impression of a sharp drop in the bias or implicit bias here when I'm not sure that the data shows that. So, I simply wanted to make that point. If you want to respond more, that's fine, but up to you.
Yeah, no, no, I will, just, that was not the intent. And if you go back to slide 23, that's really what we wanted to start this part of the conversation with. I think this addresses what you're talking about, that we still have some major issues in terms of the rate, the per capita rate. We didn't show it on a chart, but we wanted to highlight that at the beginning of this part of the presentation. Highlight that very issue, that we still have those issues that we have to make better. The progress of fewer stops per cap, or any way you slice it, I think is a step in the right direction. But this clearly, this slide clearly points out that we have a whole lot more work to do and that these numbers are still disproportionately not where they, where we want them.
We agree on that, and I would just say picture's worth a thousand words. And just, I think maybe supplementing this in future presentations to have a chart on the rate, on the rate by race, if you're going to present the other one, I think would be helpful for the public just in terms of getting an accurate view of the attempts to address bias.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor. Appreciate your feedback, and we definitely can, we can address that.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Paskin?
Thank you, President Yi. And let me just start by thanking Supervisor Fuhr and those who preceded Supervisor Fuhr for making us actually have this meeting and spend this amount of time. And let me thank the department for really giving such a remarkably thorough presentation. Chief Scott, I appreciate- presentation Chief Scott I I appreciate your presentation and I appreciate you I have actually been on this board under any number of police chiefs and the way you're handling it I sincerely honor and in the same breath let me concur with Supervisor Walton which is that I I think the most important thing that I heard this evening is that the work chief that you and your command staff are undertaking is to institutionalize reform within the department and whether we're talking about any recommendations or if we're talking about tier one or tier two or tier three and and I'm sorry about the unfortunate words from your consultant at the beginning that you're never going to get to all of the recommendations which the department actually disagreed with I think the most important thing is that this reform effort becomes an institutional effort and that it goes on long beyond your tenure chief long beyond any of our tenures as city council members or board of supervisors members and that is what's the most important so I I would like to concur with Supervisor Walton that maybe the time and the role of the consultant function may need to morph into something else or something different it may have reached the end of its logical lifespan so I just want to put that out there for the department and for my colleagues but I really want to commend you Chief Scott and your command staff and as you know I was the number one detractor of the expansion of your command staff and I actually was prepared this year to go to Budget Chair Fuhrer and once again bring that up I lost on a two to five vote a number of years ago when you first became the chief when you wanted to expand the staff I did not do that this year based on your personal admonition to this supervisor that that staff was institutionalizing reform behavior and reform protocols within this institution that is the department and indeed and I appreciate what Supervisor President said which is let's see the rates in a graph but indeed the overall numbers show that during your tenure there has been profound reform within the department I mean we have not had an officer involved shooting for as long as the entire time that I've been in office up until last week and we've all seen that we can come to our conclusions and unlike your predecessor chief you did not stand up and say this was a justified shooting you said we are going to be transparent we are going to actually go to the public and we're going to talk about this and we're going to let the results and the evidence present itself and I I was profoundly appreciative of that tragic incident I watched the video I hate horror I don't watch you know Halloween films but thank you for the reforms that you've undertaken and with that I'll turn it back to the chair. President Yi I've turned it back to you sir.
Sorry Supervisor Haney was on mute.
Thank you President Yi and thank you chief you know I I had a question and and this is also something that I think the board should consider which is what is the best way for us to engage with these reports and recommendations this was obviously a very long a presentation and I wanted to ask you chief you know I I as I've understood it there's been a desire and maybe an expectation that these that there be a more regular report to the board even quarterly and I think that that what is the best way for us to engage with this I mean you know I don't I I think that we haven't had our last hearing on this for maybe a year and I think for us it's hard when we have so many questions about process and with the consultants to really engage with the numbers in an adequate way as as a board or even within a committee structure so I just want to put that out there that also maybe this is to President Yi that we need to figure out a way regular way for us this to come in front of us and engage and provide a a level of oversight that I think though I do really appreciate this this conversation and this presentation that coming once a year and having a five hour hearing is probably not the best way to do it.
President I can just briefly respond we we definitely be whatever President Yi and the board decides we will accommodate and if that's quarterly it'll probably serve to be you know shorter presentations quarterly we definitely can do that and also in the interim we invite any of the board members that wish to see any of the work the training or anything that might be of interest to the board definitely we invite you to do that as well because I think that would be very insightful if you all are inclined to do that but definitely whatever President Yi and the board decides we will we will do.
I I think what we do you know will be maybe towards the end or at the end of the meeting we'll make a recommendation whether it's suggesting that we just keep this hearing open and have you come back maybe trying quarterly first and if that seems to be too too often then we could adjust it so thank you Supervisor Haney I I think that's a good suggestion Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes thank you very much first I just want to really thank the chief chief clearly took this very seriously and clearly you have you know I think a real desire to share with us all the work that you've done and your accomplishments toward the the reforms I also want to say that we've come a really long way you know having seen policing 40 years ago up close people who say we haven't changed they're really wrong we've come a long way one thing I think that I really like the CM CR whatever it is because I actually think it breaks up that chain of command because part of the problem I think was this direct chain of command and not people able to really think about themselves about the situation and assess the situation also as a group and I think that that is going to really go a long way in policing and also to change the culture but what I want to really ask is that you know when we got this book when we got this report on the Blue Ribbon Panel on transparency and like you know it had 272 reforms and we talked about all these reforms what repeatedly throughout this book said was that it wasn't the whole picture that there are many times that officers would not participate in discussions or not be actually really transparent or forthcoming and that there was a culture within and in this book also in this Blue Ribbon Panel book it really mentions a lot about the culture within the police department and how detrimental the culture was to really the reforms can you just briefly tell me how are we progressing on that because that was a major theme throughout this book.
Yes Supervisor thank you and that actually informed a lot of the CRI recommendations and community focus groups that happened that led to the recommendation as you recall the chronology of all this that Blue Ribbon Panel report was issued first and I know I I've read it several times and what you will see is there's some recurring themes so some of the a lot of the CRI was informed by that book although the recommendations aren't all the same but a lot of the themes found its way into the CRI body of work so I think a lot of those will be realized and even some of the ones that aren't some of the recommendations were actually good recommendations that are worthy of some of them I think we have implemented but.
But are we changing the culture that this this Blue Ribbon Panel really talks about this culture that really permeated throughout your police department that actually many times mentioned in this book that we can't get the reforms we want unless we really talk about we tackle the culture within your police department so do you feel like the culture is is there a shift are we is it shifting from when we first had this report on the Blue Ribbon with the Blue Ribbon Panel?
I I do I think there's a definitely change in mindset and culture I think you know the openness the you know you you have to be able to accept really the outside scrutiny you have to be able to accept the criticism and 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 look at it constructively you know and I know there's you know you know the meetings that we have and I know Ms. Jones is going to present next and you know the 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 pressure I'll say the pressure that she puts on us but she keeps those issues on the forefront and you know we don't always like hearing what we hear but we need to hear it and we have to be open to it and and I think that mindset is really what part of what what reform is all about and I think it 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 has changed you know and then another thing is we're a young department you know patrol is very young you know when you look at the patrol officers you saw the officers on that video we're very young department so they're learning you know a different way of of doing things as you heard some of the office some of the junior officers say now they feel comfortable speaking up in these critical incidents and and they're and they're being heard and that's really important I mean that's really important you stated it and you know this culture very well that's really important so I do think that you know that's just only part of it but yes.
Yeah well that's the leadership too thank you and then I just want to respond quickly to Supervisor Haney's comment so I helped I called for the hearing the last hearing and then I called for this hearing so I think if if supervisors as you know I am leaving office as is President Yi and if you wish to have these more often then it is really up to you because we've been the ones to call these hearings and we have been the only ones to call I've been the only one to call this hearing so if you would like more hearings more frequently and more shorter presentations then I think it's really up to you to call these hearings and I want to just recognize Felicia Jones who is next who has actually been on us to actually call these hearings and she has been so that the force behind it to say with our office like when are we going to have another hearing and so President Yi if you wouldn't mind I think Ms. Jones have been waiting a while to speak and if we could give her the floor that would be great.
I will give her the floor and I see nobody on the roster so she was up next anyways so thank you very much everybody we're going to move on to one more presentation which is Felicia Jones from Justice for Mario Woods Coalition are you there?
Yes I am President.
Okay let's go for it.
Okay um to be black in America is being labeled as a suspect by San Francisco Police Department my name is Felicia Jones I am the founder of wealth and disparities in the black community and I would like to thank all of the board of supervisors for having this as Supervisor Walton would say this use of force presentation by San Francisco Police Department I really want to give a shout out to Supervisor Fuhrer when we came last year one year ago and when she suggested you know after we've been really putting pressure on her to do something she decided to have another hearing I was totally against it however the politics in San Francisco is quite different I often say I am not a politician I am an activist so again I want to thank Supervisor Fuhrer the presentation in which Chief Scott and Hillard Hines gave I just want to say I'm a little annoyed by it because I do agree with Supervisor Walton that Hillard Hines should not get any more monies after getting over a million dollars from the city and county of San Francisco and within four years San Francisco Police Department has only substantially complied with 40 recommendations of the 272 is definitely a slow process now even though that Chief Scott has indicated there are more I can't say that there are more until I see from the Attorney General's Office that these recommendations has been substantiated the other thing I want to say is to Mr. Durden of Hillard and Hines as a community member and as what we went through as a community around police murders here in San Francisco I really am appalled that you being paid the amount of money that you guys are getting to come here to the sitting and crowning of San Francisco and indicated that the 272 recommendations are not important because Mayor Lee promised all San Franciscans that all 272 recommendations will be addressed and so I was appalled at that the other thing with Chief Chief Scott kind of rubbed me the wrong way is that you kept referring to George Floyd that you guys didn't really revise the the use of force into George Floyd George Floyd definitely was a national crisis however we're in San Francisco and so I don't know why Mario Woods Alex Nieto Quieta O'Neal Jessica Williams Pat Gangara and Emil Lopez just to name a few that San Francisco Police Department wouldn't want to revise their use of force so those are the things that I really wanted to talk about and I'm we're going to show a slide but it also is that when you talk about the use of force and talked about the great things that you guys have done with community policing I believe that is a force I I have watched San Francisco Sheriff's I mean San Francisco Police Department not Sheriff's Department I work for them San Francisco Police Department around you having meetings around community policing you had meetings you know in the middle of the day you had meetings you know way out at your headquarters or in the mission you know at these odd times a day and the recommendation was that you work with marginalized communities marginalized communities not middle class white women not women who don't live in the community but marginalized communities that means these are people who are being affected by officer involved shootings the lack of community policing in our neighborhoods and so I do not believe in your community policing report I also don't believe in how I just lost my train of thought how you guys are just really going about these recommendations and the thing of it is is that when you as an as a department your budget is 696 million dollars one of the seventh largest in the United States of America and when you begin to work on these compliances around recommendations it is said that one when phase one you guys only had 13 substantially compliant recommendations that the Department of Justice accepted and phase two you sent in over 101 recommendations only 27 was substantiated 61 was returned back to San Francisco Police Department because they indicated that it was adequate information not enough information and you guys just didn't do what you needed to do they also indicated that you guys were too slow that you were significantly slower than they expected in phase two that you failed to implement a greater number of recommendations and delaying fulfillment of the promises to the community to get this work done and the community is not only the black community but the community of San Francisco they also said that you need to focus resources on program management providing consistent timelines deadlines and clear oversight Captain Bailey who was supposed to be able to oversee it she was so overwhelmed with the lack of support the the sabotaging of this particular assignment that she quit and when I asked who took her place I haven't got an answer yet so San Francisco PD leadership they indicated that you need to support captains and enforce deadlines hold all individuals involved in the collaborative reform initiative accountable for their work act more efficiently build more capacity to empower San Francisco Police Department to make the changes that is critically needed in implementing the recommendations and so it is just really for me And so it is just really for me, long presentations, beautiful slides, but when it comes to community, especially the black community, the use of force, the arrest, and racial profiling in the means of traffic stops has not gotten better. And so again, even though we work with you on a quarterly basis, we we had to call you and say, look, we know it's COVID, but we need to come back to the table. You obliged us, we appreciate it, but at the same time, there is much work to do, especially when it comes to the black community. There was low numbers, um substantially complaint recommendations reflect San Francisco Police Department difficulties in submitting adequate documentation in its packages that clear evidence of how and whether San Francisco Police Department substantially complied with the recommendations. It also indicated that you had not completed the administrative task of demonstrating implementations to the reviewers. And as I said before, sixty-one recommendations were returned. It also indicated that San Francisco Police Department needs to support, to enforce deadlines. San Francisco Police Department, to its detriment, to the detriment of its community, has not effectively utilized these working groups. And the working groups are use of force, recruitment and hiring, accountability, bias, and 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 community policing. It indicated out of all five of these working groups for a whole year, you guys only met one time. So I don't know how meeting with these working groups equals to this fabulous work that San Francisco Police Department is doing with the community. And again, the marginalized community, not people who you feel you like or they like you, but it says marginalized communities who have problems with the police department. These are the people you're supposed to be seeking out. And if you don't seek out the marginalized community, we can sit here and for three, four hours and look at these uh uh presentations from the police department, but it shows that black people are not, you know, we are the worst, we have the worst disparities. And it's been four years. And when you clump it all together and cumulatively say that San Francisco Police Department has bought down the use of force, you can say that, but not with black people. Not with black people. And so we're going to bring up some slides so we can show you how these recommendations and what the San Francisco Police Department is doing is not enough. And we're demanding that we are only four percent of the population. How is it that the use of force, we are thirteen times that of white people? We are ten times of that of white people to be arrested. We are approximately six times that of Hispanic to be arrested. And so again, we're the smallest population with the greatest disparity. And if we want to work on reforms, then we have to do the work around those who have the greatest disparity in regards to use of force, arrest, and racial profiling in the way of traffic stops. So GB, can you bring up the slides, please? So we're looking at true racial disparities in policing. Next slide. And so San Francisco Police Department targets arrests and use of force on black San Franciscans at widely disproportionate rates. And so when you look at this particular um slide, it looks, they look at the formula in which San Francisco Police Department uses, which is not the per capita formula. And when you look at that, you see black people are twenty-four percent of traffic stops opposed to white people, thirty-five percent Hispanics, nineteen Asians, twelve. You look at it, when you look at um use of force, forty-five percent blacks, twenty-five percent whites, uh, twenty-one percent Hispanics, five percent Asian. When you look at arrests, thirty-eight percent black, twenty-nine percent white, and twenty-three percent Hispanic, and six percent Asian. This is how the police department is reporting on their numbers. So I really appreciated Supervisor Peskin's comment about how you're not showing true statistics when it comes to race. And that's what we're going to do right now. Next slide. So here you have it, where if you use per capita analyst analysis by race accurately dispecs, depicts disparity, right? And so when you look at it, that black people are really four hundred and ninety times per one thousand to be stopped in traffic stops. That's racial profiling. That's racial profiling. Then you go over to use of force, eighteen per one thousand, per capita, is use of force on black people, opposed to one point four of white people, or three point two of Hispanics. And then you look at the arrest, one hundred and fifty-nine point one per one thousand versus seventeen point one white, thirty-five point nine Hispanics, and four point oh Asian. So here it depicts the the horrendous disparity of black San Franciscans. And we are saying, this has to stop. This has to stop. Four years, and you cannot bring the use of force down when it comes to black people with six hundred and ninety-six million dollars at a, as a budget? And then to say, oh, you know, we spent seventeen million to twenty-two million. Okay, sounds like a lot of money, but when it compares to your budget, that that's peanuts. Next slide, please. Next slide. I guess we're having a little trouble. Okay, so here we have San Francisco Police Department targets arrests and use of force on black San Franciscans at widely disproportionate rates. Can you go back, GB, please, to the previous slide? And so we hear the use of force with thirteen times that of whites, that the police department engages use of force on black people. What is the problem here? Why can't you get it together? What is it that you need to reduce these numbers? With all your staff, as Peskin has indicated, he is for you getting more police officers. He's think you're doing a fine job. Well, when it comes to the black community, we surely don't think that San Francisco Police Department is doing a fine job when it comes to the use of force of black people. Okay, next slide, please. And here you you were talking about arrest. I work in the jails. I've been working in San Francisco County jails, the whole jail. I've been over every jail, right? And we are about four percent of the population, but we represent over fifty-four percent of the jail population. And going back to my dear friend Jeff Adachi, may he rest in peace, when he wrote this, you know, this report around arrest in San Francisco and blacks. And so when you are arrested, the police has the opportunity to set the stage of your charges. So when you go to jail, based upon what the police said your charges are, until you go to court, that's how you will be able to determine if you can bail out or you have to sit there and wait. And so we are nine point three times that of whites to be arrested. Four times, four point four times that of Hispanics of being arrested. Mind you, again, I have to keep going back to the population in which we are in San Francisco, four to five percent. And so the work, the presentations, I I like Chief Scott, I'm willing to continue to work with Chief Scott, but these statistics right here, I'm not willing to 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 work with him and keep these statistics like this. They have to come down. And as the Board of Supervisors, we are beseeching you to be an overseer for San Francisco Police Department around these recommendations. You cannot continue to only have them come once a year and give a five-hour presentation to cover all of this. And I don't even know how it got to once a year because when we first started this, the police department was coming to the Board of Supervisors on a quarterly basis. And so therefore, coming on a quarterly basis, it shows more transparency. And that's what we are in need of, transparency. Next slide, please. And so again, when you look at it per capita, here we are, you know, it's disproportionate. And so these are traffic stops. So we really, traffic stops, racial profiling, however you want to name it. It's still a huge disparity of black versus white Hispanics.
Ms. Collins is saying, and I um, and I hear you.
Who is that speaking? I don't know, I'm getting some kind of feedback. All right, next slide, please. Give me next slide, please. And so here is what we are looking at, you know, um, around use of force, arrest, traffic stops. And you see the traffic stops, which are blue, is actually going up. So the police department is not getting better on racial profiling. They're getting worse. And again, you know, we we have to do something. You can't keep, you know, targeting us, you can't keep having us be victim to all of these things that are going on, like, you know, when you see someone black, oh, we're guilty. And so these are how these disparities work out. And so we have to begin to stop. When we talk about Black Lives Matter, then black lives have to really matter, not only to San Francisco Police Department, but also to each and every one of you on the Board of Supervisors and in the community board room. Next slide. And so the key problem areas, which we feel that um the reforms are really not in compliance, again, is use of force, accountability, bias, community policing, and recruitment and hiring and personnel practices. That we feel, as we uh look at the stats, as we talk to the Attorney General's Office and go over, a lot of the recommendations in which the police department works on, they're very um soft recommendations. They're really not working on the harder recommendations around these areas. And so again, if in fact Hillard and Hines has worked almost two million dollars, then surely, all these things in which the the San Francisco Police Department can't get a hold of, then what what is Hillard and Hines there for? If you can't help them substantiate these two hundred and seventy-two recommendations, why wouldn't City and County give them two points, so, you know, two point million dollars? Why would we do that? For the sake of politics? And as I said, I'm an activist, I'm not a politician. Okay, next slide, please. So the San Francisco, the city of San Francisco, San Francisco Police Department, DOJ, includes ninety-four findings and two hundred and seventy-two recommendations. Reforms processed began in October twenty sixteen under US DOJ oversight. The state of California DOJ took over the city of San Francisco State, San Francisco Police Department signed a MOU on February fifth, twenty eighteen. Again, a MOU that promised that San Francisco Police Department and the city and county of San Francisco would see it through, that all two hundred and seventy-two recommendations will be addressed. The city and county, the city and state, San Francisco Police Department MOU signed February fifth, twenty eighteen, as a duration of thirty-six months. It actually expires February fourth, twenty twenty-one, but again, Hillard and Hines is asking for an extension through um through September twenty twenty-one, in which they have already been paid upfront, based upon what the young lady said. So they've already got their one point five million dollars, which expires February fourth, for the basis of the MOU. So even giving them six hundred more thousand dollars to September, what is that? You know, for another uh seven months of work, you get six hundred thousand dollars? And you can't even help the police department substantiate the recommendations? So again, I agree wholeheartedly with Supervisor Walton, that they don't deserve to continue to take monies out of the mouths of San Franciscans and get paid and not do the work. So Hillard Hines has, as of this point, as of the latest report, March twentieth, March twenty twenty, I should say, reported only forty reforms as substantially completed by San Francisco Police Department out of two hundred and seventy-two in four years' time. In four years' time. So again, when we look at what San Francisco is lacking, San Francisco Police Department is lacking, we have to really be able to hold them accountable to the things that they're like lacking. And the things that they are lacking definitely is showing through and by way of the black community and black San Franciscan around the use of force, around arrest, around racial profiling, traffic stops, and the lack of working with marginalized communities. I've had meetings with uh Chief Scott and his command staff. And, you know, Commander Lazar tried to indicate to me that um they were working with the community. Well, for me, you weren't working with the community because we're comfortable in working with, you know, prevention age children, which includes elementary school children. However, you guys aren't comfortable in working with T population, which is the number one, eighteen to thirty, number one age group, that we need to have community policing around. We need to be able to reduce the use of force around this particular age group. And you have to learn how to deal with them, how to communicate with them. And I began to work with San Francisco Police Department to develop a program to do just that, starting with my program in San Francisco County Jail. However, as we got ready to implement and move forward with it, COVID came. So, you know, for me, So, you know, for me, I'm out in community, I am a community advocate. I was born and raised in San Francisco. And so, you know, we have to work on the things that we don't do so good. And if we're going to be true and really be able to come and give four or five hour presentations and talk about what all you're doing, we got to be able to address the hardcore things that are not being addressed in the City and County of San Francisco. And that is the outlandish rates of use of force, arrest, and traffic stops among black people. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you very much, Ms. Jones, for your presentation. Okay, so that ends all the presentations. And if there are other comments, questions, and so forth, colleagues, please indicate that you would like that. Otherwise, we have people, um, that are waiting for public comments. It seems like Chief Scott wanted to say something.
I'm willing to answer any questions, um, by the Board of Supervisor. I love Chief Scott, but you didn't have five hours, Chief.
No, I'm, I'm good, I'm good, Supervisor.
Supervisor Walton.
Thank you so much, President Yi. And I, I don't have a question, but I do just want to thank, um, Ms. Jones for all of her work and for really calling out the disparities that exist and also the discrepancies in the data in terms of how we feel that in community and what's, what, what's happening with, um, the reforms. And so I appreciate her for coming on, taking that time to be here and for all of her work with community.
Supervisor Paskin? Supervisor Paskin?
Thank you, President Yi. Uh, through to the President, Ms. Jones. Uh, number one, I really appreciate the fact that you sent that PowerPoint to all of us in advance of this meeting. And, um, I really appreciate the fact that you're holding all of us, the police, the board, the Police Commission accountable. Um, and we are making advancements. And it could not be done without the diligent work of you and the community. So I just, I just want to say that, um, to Ms. Jones and my colleagues.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Jones, and, uh, for all of your work and advocacy. One thing that I think, and this is for the, the consultants as well, that, that I'm a bit surprised, um, that we have, that we don't have in front of us, is a very clear set of cons- You know, Supervisor Walton and others are already, um, and me and others are already talking about what we're going to do to make sure we continue our role in oversight, um, once, uh, you are, you're gone. Um, and we'll definitely be working with you, Ms. Jones, on that. And thank you all again for the, for the presentation, um, to the Wealth Disparity Coalition.
Okay, I don't see anybody else on the roster for now. Um, why don't we go to public comments at this point? Uh, Madam Clerk, would you like to get that going? And I'd like to give each speaker two minutes.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Members of the public who wish to provide public comment on this hearing, item number 13, should call 415-655-0001, meeting ID 146-520-5747, then pound, and then pound again. If you have not already done so, please dial star three to line up to speak. A system prompt will indicate you have raised your hand when you are in line. Please wait until the system indicates you have been unmuted, and then you may begin your comments. Mr. Koo, do we have anyone in, in the queue?
Yes, I have 11 callers in the queue. I will queue the first caller.
Thank you, caller. Please begin.
Hi there, my name is, my name is David Aronson. I'm a father of two and a small business owner in the Richmond District. I'd like to thank the Supervisors, Chief Scott, for having the hearing today. Um, I'll say that I am also concerned about the state of disparity in policing and targeting of the black community in San Francisco. And that even after several years and, uh, the Department of Justice reformed that we have made so little progress during this time. Um, I would also like to echo the, uh, some of the comments of the Supervisors and Ms. Jones, that I would like more frequent updates, preferably quarterly if possible. Um, I think doing it once a year is just not good enough, and it doesn't allow the transparency that we need. I think Ms. Jones made a great point about that. I also support, uh, wealth disparity in the black community's call for, uh, better statistics, especially looking at per capita statistics. I think if you take those out and gives, uh, it does not really give the full picture of the disparity of the policing, especially of the black community. I'm also, uh, concerned about the progress that's been done under the guidance of, uh, the consultants. And I'll say this, I don't have words for the consultants. Uh, the police, the police department, the Supervisors, we paid for these consultants. These are our words. I'm not gonna, they're, they may be a punching bag, they may be a convenient fall guy, but they are not the problem. The problem is, is that we are not making the progress. And frankly, if they're help us to make, if they are there to help us make the progress that we need, we need to find somebody better who can actually do this effectively. Um, I've got questions. They said that there, there are things that weren't important in these recommendations. Who determined that? Was the community involved? If so, which, which community was involved? Did we involve the black community? Did we, who was talked to? Who made those decisions? Once again, this is not directed at the consultants. This is directed at SFPD and the Board of Supervisors, and everybody responsible for oversight of this consultant. Uh, they can be a fall guy, but they are not the ones who are ultimately responsible. Uh, you all are.
Thank you for your comments. May we have the next speaker?
Hello, my name is Adriana Camarena. I am with Justice for Louis. Louis was killed on April 7th, 2016 by SFPD officers. He was a Mayan indigenous man. I am calling because, um, I'm very interested in this report. And I would like to highlight one of some of the things that have been said. The people police wanted to make much of the strategic planning process, but this has been an atrocious strategic planning process for reform. There have been no priorities set for, for the different recommendations. And there was no timeline set for these recommendations. So perhaps for me, most egregious, and something I have brought up in each and every report in front of the Board of Supervisors, is that no measurable goals, no outcome goals have been set. So when we see a presentation like the one that Felicia has given us, we see the disparities, we see the inequities that this reform is supposed to change. But since these are not the goals of the reform, when we come before the Board of Supervisors, instead of having accountability for reform process, we have just an accounting, 40% of recommendations, a number, 80% of this, of that. So I only have two minutes. So I'll try to make my point here. And is that what we need when we talk about collaborative reform process is not a collaboration with the DOJ or with another state institution. They may be useful, but we need is a collaborative community process. And that is not what has been set up in this, in, for this reform. So I agree with the last caller that we may have a, a fall guy with the consultant, but this is a problem of how this reform has been set up. And to end, I just want to say that we have to remember that this reform is already obsolete in the context-
Thank you for your comments. Can we have the next caller, please?
The very first finding and recommendation from the 2016 DOJ report is about use of force. Recommendation number one is that the SFPD must commit to reviewing and understanding the reasons for the disparate use of deadly force. One of the specific recommendations is that SFPD needs to provide ongoing training for officers throughout the department on how to assess and engage in encounters involving conflict with potential for use of force, with the goal of minimizing the level of force needed to successfully and safely resolve such incident. In other words, SFPD fails in training its officers how not to escalate interactions on the street into ones where deadly force occurred. The fatal officer involved shooting of Cesar Vargas on October 10th is a clear example of an encounter being escalated into a deadly force event by the police. When those officers found Mr. Vargas on Oda Street, they were well aware that he had a knife. But they also should have been well aware that he was on foot and cornered, and no pedestrians were at risk. Yet they immediately confronted him in the street without delay and provoked a confrontation that ended in his death. It is appalling that Mr. Vargas's life wasn't worth the time it would have taken to pause and respond deliberately to the situation rather than rushing with guns, guns drawn. Earlier in this meeting, Chief Scott was very proud of the work that has been done on use of force, particularly General Order 5.01. But in the case of Cesar Vargas, the SFPD failed in at least three of the elements of 5.01, namely de-escalation, establishing communication with non-compliant subjects to defuse conflict, and a key voluntary compliance before resorting to force options and proportionality of response when encountering a subject who was armed with a weapon other than a firearm. General Order 5.01 is a triumph on paper, but not for Cesar Vargas and other-
Thank you for your comments. We currently have 24 listeners and 11 callers left in the queue. Uh, Mr. Koo, please get us the next caller.
Linda Chapman, excuse me, representing Cara. Um, we are involved in trying to get reform with regard to Special Victims Unit, investigation of abuse of elders and people with disability, disabled adults, you know, mainly mentally ill people, not obviously with the same subject. But I think some of the things I say may cast some illumination on, um, you know, the issue of police reform. I'm also currently taking a course with USF professor, who was formerly an SFPD leader on the subject of police culture and reform. So I would say, first of all, in the four times that I went to the Police Commission about the violent elder abuse at the Jewish home and the failure of the detective from the special unit, Special Victims Unit to investigate at all, the commission was just outstanding. They directed the chief to investigate the Jewish home and the Special Victims Unit, result zero. When I went back again later, same thing. They directed the police chief to investigate the need for reform in the Special Victims Unit and investigate the Jewish home, result zero. When I first began to try to pursue getting something done after the investigation totally failed, um, I worked my way up through the chain of command, starting with the Special Victims Unit, winding up to the chief's office. Response is zero, not even a callback. And then I would, you know, when I was at one of those Police Commission hearings, Department of Ability came in and they reported, I think this would be relevant to you, 49 cases where they recommended discipline, of course, I don't know for what. On one occasion, the chief did discipline. They were very concerned. And the chief's responses to them were, well, he couldn't tell them why he didn't discipline.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Chapman. Mr. Koo, can we have the next caller?
Good evening, this is John Krew. And the big picture here, what really matters in this area is not what we say we want, it's what we actually do to achieve them, or if we're willing to do them at all. The big picture here is it has been four years, as Ms. Jones said, since this city was promised reforms, 272 of them from DOJ cops. And it wasn't just Mayor Lee, it was the entire city's family, from the Police Commission to the department leadership, I believe the Board of Supervisors endorses. We were promised all of those reforms would be implemented as quickly as possible, not just the ones that the POA would agree to after two and a half years of negotiations. So the question for the board really is, are you satisfied with this pace of reform after four years? And if not, what are you going to do about it? I have two suggestions in that regard. But I want to point out that what we're talking about, it's not really four years. The disparities that Ms. Jones highlighted have existed in San Francisco, well-reported and documented, for 20 years. And indeed, Mayor Newsom had a very similar study. The Police Executive Research Forum came in, did a comprehensive study. We were promised that was going to be implemented, it was not. This is not the SFPD's first reform rodeo. The two things that the board can do and should do that other cities are doing, that are serious about these issues. Number one is the police union contract. The US Conference of Mayors recently recommended that these contracts have to be dealt with to clear away the barriers to reform. Uh, and indeed, the major city chiefs associations, NAACP Legal Defense Fund, Campaign Zero, people recognize that you have to deal with police union contracts. And indeed, this city, just two years ago, said its position in contract negotiations and arbitration with the POA was that it was, quote, "an essential objective" to pursue a particular thing in the contract that would expedite the DOJ reform process. That was the city's position, according to Carol Eisen of DHR two years ago. This year, the proposal is to give the POA two more 3% raises without any sort of concessions on reform.
Thank you, caller. Thank you for your comments. May we have the next caller?
Hi, this is Ben Paul, I'm a resident of District Five. I think it's unconscionable that SFPD is targeting black San Franciscans over 10 times the rate of white folks. And this is virtually unchanged after over four years of reform attempts. So I'm in support of Felicia Jones and wealth and disparities in the black community. I'm asking two things. Number one, the Board of Supervisors passed legislation requiring the SFPD report per capita disparities. You can see they reported from the Center for Policing Equity, that they use per capita to have accurate reporting. And Supervisor Preston's comment today also got out that anything else is misleading. Um, so SFPD doesn't report it because no one requires them to do so. So it's on the Board of Supervisor to make that requirement. Number two, Board of Supervisors and the mayor's office need to actually set deadlines for the completion of reforms. Um, and have the SFPD be held accountable if they do not meet those deadlines. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Can we have the next caller, please?
Supervisors, again, today, we're here to discuss racism in our criminal justice system. And again, today, we're here after years and decades of promises of reform, to discuss how they haven't been effective. How there is another person dead on the rug that if the reforms that had been promised to have occurred had happened, then this person would not be dead. It is unreasonable to continue to give them leeway to kill people at will. What they previously promised that they would do. They would attempt to isolate, contain the subject. They would attempt to establish a buffer zone. They would attempt to have a crisis intervention team, which clearly they should have had in this instance. They should have designated an officer to establish, report, and engage in communication with the subject. They're all things that are promised in their own words that are vitally necessary to de-escalate a situation, and none of them occurred. And that's just the MO of the SFPD. They're here to murderously kill us. They're here to politically oppress us. They are not our savior, they do not keep us safe. And it is absolutely obscene that we continue to expect them to do so. do so. So when we look to this as a group and as a community, I ask that we reject the oppressive contract from the POA. I ask that we work towards abolishing it. And I ask that we look in our community and say, this was a murder. This was a murder because we established policies that would have prevented it, and they weren't followed. And that means that this was unlawful.
Thank you, caller, for your comments. Mr. Koo, can we have the next caller?
So my name is Francisco DeCosta, and what I want to state is that we have a population of 840 here in the city and county of San Francisco. And this committee and new Board of Supervisors has to pay attention to every segment of the population who is suffering, every segment of the population that is suffering. And the mistakes that y'all make by hiring consultants, this is an ongoing thing. What y'all fail to understand is that COPS, which is an acronym for Community Oriented Policing Services, was defunded as soon as Donald Trump was elected. And those recommendations were done by us, the people, we, the people. I did not see a jailbird who is on your team here and some other person that lives in Daly City by purports to represent San Francisco. I did not see them in the trenches. I was the first to write about Oscar Grant. I was the first to write about Mario Woods. We do not need these people taking money from the police and the sheriff's department and then bitching about the consultants. We want fairness and justice for all the people of San Francisco, every segment of San Francisco.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. DeCosta. Can we have the next caller, please?
Good evening, Supervisors and Chief Scott. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Deputy Public Defender Brian Cox. First, I'd like to thank Chief Scott for his leadership in moving the reform process along. Your commitment to meaningful reform is sincere and well-placed. And I'd also like to thank Mrs. Jones, and thank you for grounding this conversation in what really matters, the continued overpolicing of Black and Brown communities. This afternoon, we've heard that SFPD is moving too slow, and the reforms can and should move faster. No one can argue with that. It took three years to move one recommendation into substantial compliance. Based on the progress chart that Hillary Heinz presented, SFPD will take about seven years to complete the remaining 272 reforms. That's 10 years of full compliance for the 2016 assessment. I understand SFPD has a different metric, but these competing metrics point to the general confusion about the reform process. We've heard vague promises and lots of nice words about how SFPD intends to move faster and how the pace of substantial compliance will increase, that SFPD has a good cadence and has built the framework to accelerate the pace of reform. What does a good cadence or even the right framework matter? We need lightning-fast cadence, not good cadence. We need results now. That's the only thing that matters. But let's be clear, too many shootings have happened and continue to happen, unfortunately. We've heard that things are getting better, but we all know the truth. Black and Brown people continue to be policed, arrested, prosecuted, and in jail at disproportionate rates. Those are just the facts, and this conversation on reform needs to be grounded in that. And while some progress has been made, and that's important to build a culture and institutionalize the reforms within SFPD, becomes a point where small, slow progress is no longer enough. Four to seven years won't cut it, or even two or three, based on SFPD's calculation, particularly without a detailed public plan to complete the reforms or deadline to complete the reforms. At the next meetings, the public needs to see more details about not just the reforms, but how SFPD intends to stop the overpolicing of Black and Brown communities, because that is what matters. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Koo, can we have the next caller, please?
Hello?
Yes, please begin your comments.
Thank you. My name is Kit. I'm the mother of two, living in District 7 with my family. I'm urging you to please don't get lulled by SFPD's lengthy presentation. There are a lot of words, a lot of slides, there's even a video. That's wonderful, but really, the only thing that matters is what's happening on the street. And as Ms. Jones from Wealth and Disparities in the Black Community made so clear, San Francisco's Black citizens are being targeted at wildly disproportionate rates despite this lengthy reform process. So I have a very simple question for this board. What are you going to do about it? What are you going to do immediately to stop what is clearly a crisis? The story here is not a consultant. It's about the SFPD, and it's still unwillingness to change racism that guides hand every day on the street. So what will the board do? Will you be looking again at department's budget, looking at department's scope? What else can we possibly be doing? Whatever it is, please do it immediately. If you don't hold them accountable, absolutely nothing else matters in this process. We'll hear more word, but people will continue to be hurt on the street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We currently have 20 listeners and three people left in the queue. Mr. Koo, can you queue up the next caller, please?
Hi, my name is Marty J. I want to primarily amplify the, I'm sorry, my dog, amplify wealth and disparities in the Black community, a critical point that use of force data and arrest data and traffic stop data be factored in with the, with per capita information critically, and that if the SFPD can't do this and can't make that prominent, then the Board of Supervisors needs to do that. And this leads me to why we've had a community, I'm sorry, the Center for Policing Equity was brought in to do this big academic study about why the use of force is so disproportionately used against Black folks, and we have yet to hear about that report. It's four years since they were mandated, I believe. I'm not sure when that date started, but why is finding number one and recommendation number 1.1 about looking at the reasons and looking at them and facing them and dealing with them, why are we hearing nothing about that? The other thing I'd like to say is that many of the recommendations call for the input and the, and meaningful input from marginalized impacted communities. I understand that the working groups have some folks from impacted communities on them, but the meetings are so at times that people generally can't make them. I'd like to know if young Black men have been...
Thank you for your comments. We get the next caller, please?
I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors and SFPD for their time today in hearing public comments. I know the hour is late, but I hope this body will spend the same attention and platform to its constituents as it has to Hillary Heinz consultants and SFPD with their three-and-a-half-hour presentation, as Paul says it was. I'm not a false speaker, so I'll cut right to the point. I wanted to raise your attention to this body to recently published Department of Police Accountability Reports, talks about use of force data within SFPD. Two findings in particular, one, inadequate data analysis, like missed opportunities for transparency and data-driven decisions. And then, secondly, weak public reports under transparency and limited information to decision-makers. As we see today, these are just a matter of kind of splitting hairs over numbers. We had Chief Scott earlier crafting a follow-up of his own, citing improvements in racial disparities being reduced in certain areas, highlighting traffic as a major area and traffic stops being an area of improvement that we see for SFPD. We found that, looking at the data presented by Wealth and Disparities, this wasn't only an exaggeration, but a complete reversal of the actual trends. So for the position where the chief of police doesn't even understand the current situation and can't speak articulately to that, I think it's very clear, standing in kind of red flag that we need to work a lot more on how we're looking at this data. With that said, you know, if we're not only not doing enough, we're nowhere near best-in-class, and we're paying for these consultants, with Hillary Heinz to be supposedly helping us with this analysis, which is very simple per capita analysis that Wealth and Disparities has been pushing for for two years now. So although Chief Scott shrugged it off and said, well, we can just add that in next time, we've been asking them to add this in for two years now. So to understand where we're coming from with our frustrations on the pace, that is probably good context. I think it's inconceivable considering this contract with Hillary Heinz and the fact that we don't have basic reporting out there. We've seen this progress. I wholeheartedly support Felicia Jones and Chief Supervisor Walton's call to take this money and redirect it towards functions that are actually returning results for San Franciscans and the Black community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Koo, may we have the next caller, please?
Hi, this is Manasa, and I just want to say that I grew up here close to the city and share so many wonderful memories with diversity of friends here in San Francisco, that I'm appalled to learn that the reality is much darker behind the scenes for the Black and Brown community here in San Francisco. And the fact that there is a clear difference for privileged groups of people who feel protected versus terrorized by the very department that is supposed to be withholding the law in a humane manner for all the citizens here in San Francisco needs to be acknowledged and changed on a fundamental level. And I'd like to thank Chief Scott for the work that he's doing and Ms. Jones for her presentation for presenting the data and showcasing the rate of disparity in the Black community in such a clear and digestible way. And I'd like to voice that I'm in support of the wealth and disparities, and I'm calling for the Board of Supervisors to pass legislation requiring that SFPD report disparities on a per capita basis so that we can all have an accurate view of the disparity and the Board of Supervisors and the mayor's office to use all the tools at their disposal to set deadlines for completion of reforms or be held accountable for not meeting those deadlines. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Koo, do we have anybody left in the queue?
Madam Clerk, that completes the queue.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Okay, so, since there are no other speakers, then public comment is now closed. Are there, okay, let's go back to us. Are there any other comments and/or questions? Supervisor Preston?
Thank you, President Yee. Yeah, I did have a question for either of the consultants, just to follow up on the comment that was made by one of the public commenters, John Creu. I'm curious, in your work with other departments around the country, which you mentioned earlier, whether you would agree with the assertion that the negotiation of a police MOU is a key opportunity to eliminate barriers to necessary police reforms? Do you think that's an accurate statement in your experience?
Hello?
Mike, do you want to grab that one? Go ahead, Mike.
I think he's muted.
So, Mike, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
You're still muted. Okay, you're on, I think.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. I'm sorry. I will agree that one of the issues and one of the challenges that are facing police agencies around the country concerns the degree to which contracts may impede a police chief's ability to, and a city's ability, to achieve some of the objectives that they want. And so I think there is a concerted effort by a number of cities to, I won't say take-back control, but look at how union contracts influence the decisions that leaders are able to make and see where in those contracts, where there was management rights that are there, they can sort of reobtain them.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anybody else on the roster. Again, I want to thank Supervisor Fuhr for bringing this, this forward, this hearing forward, and also for the presentations made by the consultants and in the police department, and also Mrs. Jones. Very, very insightful in terms of the different perspectives in this. I think we are making some progress, certainly from the last time we met over this issue. It was, if this is still considered slow, then that was like snail's pace. So in regards to the pace, I feel like there's been an improvement. As you see with the comments by my colleagues, that, that all of us are very anxious to see the pace be quickened, because these are crucial reforms that we'd like to see. There's, I'm glad to hear that there is some infrastructure that's built in, and also not only the infrastructure, but the, the, the ability for, for the infrastructure to actually change the culture of how reforms happen at the police department seems to be moving in the right direction. So that's, I'm very appreciative of that. And the question of the meet and confer, I still think that that needs to be addressed a little more aggressively, because I know how it could slow things down. So I, it was requested, and I'm gonna throw it out to my colleagues, I can continue this item, and for us to come back on January 19th, 2021, and I'm more than willing to do that, but however, you know, I won't be here, and I don't want to impose that to the new, new board members.
Second.
But I know most of you are returning, so it's up to you. It's your call.
Second.
Second by?
Supervisor Walton.
Supervisor Walton, okay.
Mr. President, this is the clerk. January 19th is a day after Martin Luther King Jr. Day, so I, since we have not approved the board calendar for 2021, it's possible that that could be a holiday that we're not meeting.
What's the week after?
That would be...
27.
26?
Yeah, the 26.
Okay, why don't I change that, the motion to reflect that it be January 26?
Second.
Okay. Do I need to have a vote on that?
Yes, we do need to take roll calls.
Before I do that, I'd like to acknowledge Supervisor Fuhr. Supervisor Fuhr?
Wait, I'm sorry. Okay, apologies, I was on mute. President Yee, if I just make, make a very quick statement. One, I just wanted to say that, you know, I know there's been conversation tonight about the consultant, but I will say this. When the United States Department of Justice dumped us, and after President Trump was in office, they immediately dumped us, of course, not following the Obama's administration about wanting to better police departments. I actually think that without the consultant, we couldn't have gotten this far. I think that... I think that they dumped us and we needed guidance to do this kind of work. As you know, this is very sophisticated sort of work to be able to look at these reforms in a really systemic sort of way. And I actually just think that, you know, so I just wanted to clarify that. My personal opinion is that, you know, after the DOJ jumped, dumped us, is that we were kind of left to ourselves, and so without the consultant, I don't think we have gotten this far. And then I also just want to say, in all fairness, is that my question to the consultant was really, do you think these reforms can be completed in your time during your contract and not eternity? So I just wanted to clarify that, and thank everyone for coming today, and to my colleagues. I want to thank you for taking this on and that you will actually call for hearings on a more frequent basis and that prioritize this, because I actually think that we can get the police department that the San Franciscans deserve. And then thank you to Felicia Jones, and then also to Chief Scott and his staff for taking all of this so seriously and also coming before the board today to inform us and educate us. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Peskin?
No, I removed my name from the roster.
Okay. Roll call, please, on the motion?
On the motion to continue this hearing to January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, Supervisor Stephanie?
Aye.
Stephanie, aye. Supervisor Walton?
Aye.
Walton, aye. Supervisor Yi?
Aye.
Yi, aye. Supervisor Fuhr?
Aye.
Fuhr, aye. Supervisor Haney?
Aye.
Haney, aye. Supervisor Mandelman?
Aye.
Mandelman, aye. Supervisor Mar?
Aye.
Mar, aye. Supervisor Peskin?
Aye.
Peskin, aye. Supervisor Preston?
Aye.
Preston, aye. Supervisor Ronan?
Aye.
Ronan, aye. Supervisor Safai. Perhaps he's having some technical difficulties. Safai absent. Mr. President, you have ten ayes.
Okay, so the motion passes to continue this hearing to January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Madam Clerk, let's go to our committee reports.